Good evening, welcome to Biloxi City Council Meeting on December the 2nd. Please rise for the invocation by Pastor Tim Horn, First Presbyterian Church.
Almighty God and Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for our city. Thank you so much for all the blessings that we enjoy in it. You are the giver of every good and perfect gift. And Lord, we pray that you would continue to bless our city. And we ask, Lord, that you would help us to flourish in it. We pray tonight for our city and for these leaders and for this meeting. Father, we pray that you would give our leaders wisdom. We know that you have placed them in positions of authority because you are the one that does so. And Lord, we pray that you would give them wisdom and guidance in these deliberations this evening. We thank you, Lord, for these citizens who've gathered together to serve and to come and to deliberate over the issues facing our city. And Lord, we pray that you would bless the proceedings here tonight. We thank you again for all the many gifts that we enjoy here. The beauty, the flourishing of our community, and we pray that those things will continue. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor. Mr. Glavin, will you lead us in pledge? Alright, being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote? Ms. Lucy, will you please read those changes?
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5D, Resolution to amend the Parks and Recreation Budget for the fiscal year ending 2020. We're substituting the Exhibit Only for Item 5P, Resolution pertaining to Bellevie Parkway.
Head of amended.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous votes? Moves us on to the presentation agenda, Mr. Mayor.
It's Mike to give us a report on some of our health issues.
Counsel, as you remember, this last year, we exceeded our budget on our self-insurance medical program. And we did a lot of thinking about where we were heading in future years. Our medical insurance provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield, suggested that we move into something called their Healthy Workplace Program, which is basically a program where employees may choose to join a program that involves testing, analysis, smoking cessation, and other such things to improve their quality of health. And where we're trying to go with this is a program where we'll eventually move to two tiers of insurance for our city employees, where we have those who are involved in the Healthy Workplace Program and those that aren't. And there may be a penalty for those that aren't, that might pay a higher premium. At any rate, the most important thing is during the month of January, and at your next council meeting, we'll have a report from Blue Cross Blue Shield about how they're going to do this. They're going to roll out this program and they're going to go from department to department till we talk to all 600-plus employees and giving them all an opportunity to sign up for the program. It's free, we don't pay a penny for this, and hopefully it will pay us back. So we'll have them here for your next... Councilman Tisdale's been pinging on me about when we're going to start, so the answer is we're going to start with a presentation to council at the next meeting, and then we'll roll it out in January.
Okay, thank you Mike, and I would ask to report to the minutes, spread the expenses of the Biloxi Tribal Credit Card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any departmental reports tonight? If not, we'll move on to council reports, Mr. Lawrence.
We hope everybody had a great holidays, getting ready to get into a good time of the year now with the city. We had a special need dinner that Paul Correction, Paulin put on. It was pretty awesome, probably had 200 people they fed. It really did a good job. Got two or three groups that worked, but got to do that, it turned out nice. Chief Miller didn't make it this year, but he sent everybody and his family, had about 38 of them coming from, I don't know where they come from, but we had the crew and a half. Then this Sunday, we did escort run for the KCs, and the fire department brought 60 bikes and 60 Hummers, and they picked up almost 8,000 toys. So everybody helping out to do a little bit for anybody that needs something. So that was two good things that we already did. Now we got good stuff coming up Friday, is the Christmas parade for the kids. You know, are you going to make it this year, Pofo? Okay, well just make sure you're here now, you know? So that's going to be great. And then Saturday, we have Christmas on the water, which is another great event for the city of Biloxi. So we're just getting ready to get started, all the good stuff coming up. Thank you.
Mr. Gaines? Okay, Mr. Demme? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, just a couple of things. Thanks for the wellness report, Mike, and update, I appreciate it. I actually saw a couple of CXX people at the Eisenhower Crossing, looking at something, I hope the crossing. So do we have, if we heard anything other than...
Well, we can't do any more whining than we've done. We've been beating them up.
Could I whine to somebody else? I know y'all are tired of hearing me, but I'm happy to whine to whoever you need to whine. Mr. Abid, if necessary, happy to whine to him. The other thing is, I know that we, there was some, there was an issue of campers parking at Southern Memorial Cemetery, and I know that maybe some right-of-way or something, and there was something in the air about maybe we might look at an ordinance or something. I don't know that we can do anything to regulate private cemeteries, but maybe even if it's just, if the city's got a right-of-way so that we don't have campers parking at least on the right-of-way by the cemetery. Maybe that's not enough sugar for a nickel, but it's just a sensitive topic. I know I heard from a couple of folks, I think other council members heard from some as well.
Well, Councilman, before the next meeting, I'll pull the ordinance and see what we've got in our code of ordinances about cemeteries. I just spent the last week looking at what's in the code of ordinance on grease traps, so I'm becoming more familiar with the code of ordinances. And I honestly don't know what's in there about cemeteries. There is not a separate section on cemeteries, so I'll have to look. Maybe we need a section on cemeteries.
We got a section on grease traps?
Yep.
The other thing is, because that also triggered a thought, that I know south of the bay, in terms of cemetery space available, I mean, we don't have any room in city cemeteries. And I was speaking with Councilman Barrett, and the only cemetery we could think of off the top of our heads was the Colville Cemetery. I don't know if that's public or not, but I mean, if you pass on and you want to be buried in the city of Biloxi, there's not a whole lot of places to be buried except maybe under the RV at Southern Memorial Park for cruising the coast, should that be necessary. Don't mean to make light, well, I did a little bit, but...
Funny you should bring that up. One of the things that I noted today, there was a funeral procession. And you know, I don't think any city on the Gulf Coast puts on a parade like we put on with our police escorts for cemeteries. And I think there are people in this city that believe that that's a paid-for thing. They don't realize that's a city service, and it's done very, very well.
Right, and not every city here along the coast does that. I think they do, I think most of them do it when they can, but it's just, you know, cost factor and personnel and who's available, kind of thing. But anyway, if there are any opportunities to pick up some property adjacent to the cemeteries...
And there is, and we're pursuing some of it, a couple of options there, but also, you know, some private property on the north side of the tracks that Ronnie Baker is doing some things with. So, no, we have some opportunities, and we just got to see what the real figures are.
Just keep an ear to the ground in case something comes up, you know, you never know.
Will do.
Also, just to plant a seed, not that I'm a brilliant person, if you talk to enough people, you know that I'm not a brilliant person, but the North Project's going to be done here in the next few months. I'm sure there'll be a couple of issues, residual issues, but it may be a good time I'm just thinking, before we, when this project wraps up, people are going to be looking to to look at, or at least think about, what's our vision for north of the tracks, where sell property, develop property, and I would hope that we would have a plan, some sort the North Project is, as we develop in terms of housing, commercial, all that other stuff. of guide, and that ties into what we're trying to accomplish here in East Biloxi. The, I don't know how frequently we have to do a comprehensive report, I think the statute That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glavin?
says we have to have one that looks out 20 years or 25 years.
Yes, thank you. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving.
I think the last time we did one was in 2000...
Certainly good around our home, and the Saints had a big win, and they're sitting atop the
We should be finished with the North contract in 25 years, so...
They may finish before I'm done tonight, but...
NFC as the number-one seed, and it's always good during, you've got Thanksgiving, football,
Councilman's not laughing.
But do we, Jerry, do you know when we should...
and Christmas coming around. I would like to send my deepest, deepest condolences to Billy Ray Allen's family.
I couldn't find that we're statutorily required to do one every 20 years or so, but I'm thinking
He lost his brother, John Allen, and I'd like to share just a couple of little stories
this is an opportunity maybe to look at what we want to do north of the tracks, or what we want it to look like, and then here in another couple of years, two or three years,
about John. John was a football player at Ole Miss, and a darn good one, too, and we used to all,
we're going to be done with the south side of the tracks. So, you know, what do we want all that to look like, and what kind of zoning might we
I played a little junior college ball, and we'd sit around the TV in the dorm, and we'd
consider, or what sort of changes, and attended public hearings and so forth.
watch the Billy Brewer Show. And we'd watch the highlights, and we'd focus in when they had the ball on John making good blocks, and it was just that pride of seeing a Biloxi boy, you know, playing for a major university, doing his thing on the field, and certainly our deepest condolences to his family, and certainly Billy Ray at this time. It has to be pretty tough. Note that John and Billy Ray and his brother are Biloxi Sports Hall of Famers as well, and they've contributed a lot to our community. John was on the police force and retired not too long ago, and he did a really good job for Biloxi. But I'd just like to note that, and hopefully we can close in memory of him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Just one thing, I have a reminder that Wool Market Christmas Parade is next Saturday, 2:30 PM. I think we're lining up around 1:30, 2 o'clock, for those that are going to be a part. We invite everyone to come out, and I think this is our third one, and it's getting bigger every year, so I want everybody to come out and be a part with us. That's all I have.
Mr. Gaines?
Okay, I wanted to announce on next Thursday, we're going to have Beck the Halls at Henry Beck Park. We're going to have an event, Christmas caroling, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Henry Beck Park, and we're going to watch the movie The Grinch That Stole Christmas. Speaking of The Grinch...
Kind of looked like Pofo, didn't it?
Speaking of The Grinch, I want to piggyback on what Dr. Tisdale talked about, the vision for north of the tracks, and right now, we still have the road issues there. We had some promises made that has come and gone again, and so it's time for us to start looking a lot closer at what we need to do, because I don't, just like you said, Mayor, I don't want to be another 25 years dealing with this issue at all. I spend a lot of my time, I don't have the pleasure, like my colleagues, of sitting around, I have to go around all the time and collecting how many fences are down when we have people in place to do that. That doesn't look good. I got a surprise on the last meeting about areas that are de-obligated, and I have a handicap situation all throughout my community. And if I'm not going to get that information, then that's a big problem. When we de-obligate, that's something I need to know, because I'm on the front line of dealing with a lot of the issues in the community. They come to me. They don't come to project managers or whoever, they come directly to me, and I need to have those answers. So I'm very, very disappointed in that area.
Let me, we had some meetings and walked, I think you might want to come up here, but that de-obligation issue with regard to CenterPoint doing some things and moving out the way, we had, we supposedly have a walk-through today, was it, did they actually hit that?
Mayor, my point is this, Mayor, I need to know these things. I'm the one who have to face this, not anyone else.
But the whole point of this situation was, we were going to take it and finish it. And that was with the city of Biloxi, and you know, if we're obligated to do it, and CenterPoint caused it, and Oscarinda won't fix it, we're going to do it. And that was the gist of the walk-through, that Oscarinda was going to look ahead and see if that was not going to be a problem with whatever they needed to fix. Did they, did they do what they said they were going to do today? Walk-through?
Well, yes, if the statement, Councilman, is related to Magnolia Street, we met, administration and I met with Oscarinda on Monday up at City Hall here, and we stated to them the necessity to meet and review Magnolia Street for what they installed, and make any repairs or corrections of the work they did install. They had that walk today at 1 o'clock, like they had promised. They do have at least one repair to complete on the sewer, that we noticed there is a hole in the sewer system. They're going to make those repairs, and we'll bring in our semi-annual contractors to pave that road. If there's other issues related to areas, there's no other, no areas are going to be de-obligated.
So Roy Street was not, Roy Street was not de-obligated as she said on this thing?
No, sir. What happened with Roy Street is Oscarinda did their job, AT&amp;T came in with their contractor and ripped it up to put in their fiber optic, and then they walked away. They clipped the water main, they destroyed the work that Oscarinda did. We tried to get AT&amp;T to come back and make the corrections. Well, they sent their contractors to wherever AT desires to do. So after a period of time, we kept trying to get AT&amp;T to get their contractors back out here to walk with Oscarinda, identify what AT&amp;T contractor had destroyed at Roy Street. Finally, I told my team, I said, "Look, give AT&amp;T a deadline. If they're unwilling to meet with the city, we will walk out there with Oscarinda, we will identify what is wrong, and we'll ask AT&amp;T to get their contractor to fix it," which AT&amp;T has claimed that they will do. Won't give a timeline. If they're unwilling to, then we will get it done on our own, and through whatever mechanism the administration and our legal team has, we will find someone to cover that cost. No one on any of these projects, on any of the claims, are walking away from it. Whether I've got to get Public Works or another contractor to do it, we'll have it done. It may not be as timely as everyone wants, because it's been going on a long time. There is no work that will not be completed on these projects, and we'll take it out of whatever responsibility party there is.
When I asked for that, when I asked for that because of the handicap guy in that area two or three months ago, I thought it was address, but when I hear nothing back or get blown off, then to me, that's an issue, because I have to come in this form to hear. I represent these people, and again, as I keep reiterating over and over and over, and you know, you get tired of seeing the same thing over and over, when I don't get an answer, that's an issue right there, just like taking my time out of my day. I have other things to do. I didn't have to go around looking at fences. That's a project manager's job, to have somebody, staff or whatever. But when these people call me, I'm going to get those lists, those names. She said up here, the last meeting, we got fences started. I walked around, I mean, I drove around, no fences have been started.
Well, and you bring up a good point, Councilman, and of course, I've been to all these meetings, and I've listened to the updates provided by our contractor, and we have a list of service requests that Oscarinda is working on. They're not always at the forefront of their activities, but they are getting around to them, but it's a long list, which is not due to any fault of any of the residents, contractor did the work...
It's definitely not the residents' fault.
That's right.
And that's the point I'm making, but we're five years into this, five years.
But what I would say...
I know you don't live there at all. You don't live in that neighborhood, I do, and I have to answer the questions of the people.
If you want to believe what the contractor is telling you in front of these meetings, you require them to update you every month, I would suggest that you get the other side, which is through the administration, that they meet daily with me, weekly with me, and I meet with contractor and my team. We have a long list of work that Oscarinda needs to complete, and they met with the administration, me, on the third floor of this week on Monday, and they said we are getting to these areas...
But the councilmen that represent that area get no reports at all and no updates. I have to beg all the time for reports and information, and that's what I'm sick of. And I'm just going to be honest with you. I don't have to continue to beg and ask for information. I don't want to look like the dumb bunny out there when I'm out there talking to the people. And when they de-obligate areas, I think I should be one of the people that's included in there. And if we can't get that information to me, then we need to find somebody who can get the information.
There's nothing been de-obligated. I don't know where...
There's a couple of issues that the de-obligation was used, but you know, we're trying to close that as fast as we can. There's nothing more than what we want to do, is close, you know, from SXSN to DIV GRN 1 and 2, DIV 1 and 2, and the rest of it. I mean, I can promise you, I don't live where you live, but we, you know, we want to get it done as fast and as humanly possible, and I'll do a better job in day-by-day, blah, 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 updating you.
Keeping me informed, because Thanksgiving has come and gone, and we're at the point that we were giving that, giving that date.
Right, the contractor said that they would get it done in time by November.
And I can't even count on January 31st, based on the way everything's looking. We're talking about clearing to next year, and that's not acceptable at all. We're at the point where we have to start making some decisions now. And if I don't have enough information to take back to my people when they're asking me questions, then I have to come and ask in this form, to put it on record.
Well, me and the administration are willing and able to meet at any time that is convenient to council, outside of this forum or in this forum, Councilman. We meet Monday regularly, obviously, I have a directors' meeting at 9:00, and we can meet anytime during the week that the mayor or the chief administrative officer is available. Of course, I'm always available. So if there is a time and date that we need to update you weekly, bi-weekly or daily, more than happy to. The administration is in all, in all the meetings, they're aware of what's going on, and we will provide the information as you need, so that you can properly convey that to your residents.
Well, where we at now, five years in, there need to be some type of order starting to come, come to form.
Closing plan, yeah, closing plan.
A closing plan, and that's what I talked about. I talked about an end game.
You're right, and the mayor and Oscarinda and the chief administrative officer went through that closing plan with Oscarinda on Monday at 2 o'clock upstairs.
And based on the eye test, we're no closer to that close, that end game than when we talked about it three months ago. And that's just the reality of it.
Well, we'll bring you up to snuff, you know, whenever it's convenient, if you give us a weekly or, you know, whenever you want us to set up a meeting, we'll bring you up, because again, we're looking at the six or seven areas that we're trying to video to make sure everything is done and not leaking, then the punch list, then the walk-through, and then, you know, the retainage thing that I think is some of it's on this document.
What I'm going to ask, because...
Just give us a time, is what I'm trying to say.
But I feel like, you know, I got those drawings again, and I didn't get a detail right out of what I really asked for, but what I'm going to ask for now is, everything that's been de-obligated, I want to know, so I can, that if I'm asked, I'll have a good idea of what's been de-obligated, what we have, and where we have to go. That will give me a start.
Let me repeat, what, de-obligation is not the proper term. I think, you know, we were harmed by AT&amp;T and CenterPoint, and we were trying to figure out what's the best way to close those two problems, but I don't think anything, we didn't direct Oscarinda to not work at any place, it's my understanding.
Correct.
So I mean, when Jennifer brought that up, de-obligated, you know, that was a surprise to me also.
Yes.
But, you know, it's not the right term.
And you imagine how I felt.
We're trying to...
I mean, Oscarinda's basically saying, if somebody else messed this up, I'll fix it, but you got to pay me more, and we'll say, we say, "You guys get out of the way, we'll get somebody else to get in there."
There's nothing de-obligated, Councilman. She used the wrong terminology or she misunderstood, she's got her position. In a day, I work for the administration and for the council. You want to know what's everything going on with NEMA, FEMA, court cases, appeals, the city, future projects, reimbursements? I know that because I'm paid to know that. What you hear is one slice from a contractor. If you want to know, the administration is well aware of what's going on, my boss is sitting right there, we are happy to meet with you at any day or time of the week that is convenient to you.
And I'm in this position...
The folks free get in free, so I mean, we meet for any...
And I'm in this position for information to trinkle up, because I get paid to represent the people, and you get paid to give us the information. So information trinkles uphill, and if it's not getting to this hill, then we have a problem.
Well, what I would, what I would ask then, Councilman respectfully, is when you hear the updates from the contractor, then give the opportunity for me and the administration, whether before or after that, to sit down and meet with you and say, "Okay, this is how our contractor sees, but this is where we see it, where we're at." And if there's any concerns of de-obligation or areas that are not done, we can address it at that time, but, I mean, let me say this about that.
I should be getting a report, at this point, I'm almost at the point where I should be getting a report regularly.
Weekly, yeah.
On everything that's going on, how we have this laid out, and how are we going to close this deal out, and where they're misfiring at.
Yes, sir.
That's what we need to, at this point, that's where I'm at. I need to have that.
Yeah, just settle weekly time, and you know, we're going to be going through South Project 2, so I mean, if we, like we do a directors' meeting, Councilman Tisdale's there, but we can do this update on infrastructure, because we're going to have at least four more, you know, sections to bid, but you know, we got to get in a groove on what's happening, when it's going to happen, in our matrix of, you know, the milestones we're trying to cover.
Right, just like...
Is Monday a better day for you, or Friday's a better day?
Well, I can, I'll start coming back Monday, you know?
Well, Monday at 10:00.
But I do have things to do, and like I said...
It doesn't matter to us, because I mean, even Fridays, because we, you know, we're going to be raising attention on Mondays, and Fridays, we'll know whether we had any action. So is Fridays better than Monday for you?
Mondays are fine, Mondays are fine, but this project now is time to be itemized. We cannot, when we're talking about side walls, and we're talking about retainer walls and fixing up, escaping the people properties, then there should be a itemized, we're starting in this section and move it. Right now, you probably can't even tell me where they at. You probably can't tell me where they are in fencing, because I ride the neighborhood.
Right now, Councilman, this, Oscarinda has plans to close out the area called SXSN, which is in the far east, north of the railroad tracks from basically Oak Street to the east primarily. That is their first plan to complete that area entirely, including all the repairs they had to make underground for all the pipes that were leaking, and all the fencing, and all the water main boxes, and all the signage, and all the benchmarks. They have claimed to the city and to myself that they will have that all complete by December. And they're going to work on the area called GRN 3 and 4, and they're going to work on the areas called DIV 1 and 2. So they have laid out plans to the administration, and I guess we haven't done as good of a job as what we probably need, Councilman, to convey that to you, obviously, because we hear your concerns and your frustrations. On Monday...
Right, just like-
Is, is Monday a better day for you, or Friday's a better day?
Well, I, I can, I can, I'll, I'll start coming back Monday.
Well, Monday at ten?
But I do have things, but I do have things to do, and like I said-
It, it, it doesn't matter to us, 'cause I mean, even Fridays, 'cause we, you know, we're gonna be raising attention on Mondays, and Fridays we'll know whether we had any action. So is Fridays better than Monday for you?
Mondays, Mondays are fine, Mondays are fine. But, but there, but this project now is, is time to be itemized. We cannot, when we're talking about sidewalks, and we're talking about retaining walls and fixing up, uh, 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 escaping the people properties, then there should be a itemized, we're starting in this section and moving. Right now, that, you probably can't even tell me where they at. You probably can't tell me where they are in fencing, 'cause I ride the neighborhood.
Right now, Councilman, this, uh, Oscarinda has plans to close out the area called SXSN, which is in the far east, north of the hot, uh, the railroad tracks from basically Oak Street to the east primarily. That is their first plan to complete that area entirely, including all the repairs they had to make underground for all the pipes that were leaking. And all the fencing, and all the water meter boxes, and all the signage, and all the benchmarks. They have claimed to the city and to myself that they will have that all complete by December. And they're gonna work on the area called GRN three and four. And they're gonna work on the areas called DIV one and two. So they have laid out plans to the administration, and I guess we haven't done as good of a job as what we probably need, Councilman, to convey that to you, obviously, 'cause we, uh, we hear your concerns and your frustrations. On Monday of this week, at ten o'clock, we'll be complete with our directors meeting, and the mayor and I will meet with you and, and Mike, our, uh, chief admin officer, and we will give you an update on where the contractors claim they will be, and where they're at. And, uh, we will be able to hear from you directly on what your constituents are telling you that maybe we don't see. And we will make sure to address those. If this contractor doesn't do it, I'll hire another contractor. Nothing is not going to ever get done, it's just not gonna get done as expeditiously as we all want, 'cause you're right, it is five years. Two thousand fourteen of August is when this project started.
And I hear you when you said they planned, because we plan on having a joyous Thanksgiving and a merry Christmas. However, uh, we know that that's not gonna happen. So, you know, a promise is no good. You know, that, the promise that we're giving from them has never done anything for us. Because we haven't made, met one deadline, met one promise, or met anything that they've ever said.
Yes, sir.
And when we start talking about those, those pipes and things like that, you know, you said they'll be through within a week or two with the, or when, whenever you said they're gonna finish that first SX one area, the northeast. How am I gonna believe that? Five years and that's the first section they started on. Can't believe that promise, so it's time for us to start, as I said, it's time to start looking at an end game, it's time to start looking at some closeouts. And, and yes, I am a little frustrated, because I don't like surprises either. And if I didn't have a vested interest, I wouldn't go around to each store writing down every fence that I saw, writing down every transition that I go across. I'm out there on a, using a lot of time. My personal time, that I can be using with my son. But I'm, I'm committed to what I'm doing. So the only thing I'm asking, if I'm committed, I would like to see my project manager just as committed, and also the contractors just as committed.
Well, I can't comment on the contractors, I can only comment on your project and program manager. We are committed. And we will see, uh, hopefully, Councilman, if you're, if it's okay with you on Monday at ten.
You know, 'cause I'm, I'm asking from the project and from the, uh, engineers that we're working on, a plan for me, and understanding where are we dollar-wise, where are we time-wise, and, and I'll update you as soon as I put that together, but you'll be the first, you know, to, to, uh, to be there, and, you know, I, I'm here all the rest of the week. Come, come in and I'll show you where we are as far as where I understanding now. So that's any time.
Well, you understand why I'm striking the fire, because, uh, I'm, I don't want no one to go to sleep on us. There've been a lot of promises made and, and, and none delivered. So that's the reason why I'm striking the fire. That concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, Mr. Ody, you still meeting regularly with Oscarinda?
Yes, we meet twice a week with Oscarinda, and we also meet twice a week with the administration and Oscarinda on the closeout plan.
Anybody have heartburn if I attend? Okay.
It's open to all council-
Thank you.
At your convenience.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to public agenda, where we have citizen comments. We have forty-five minutes allotted total. Each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. Once you reach the desk, please state your name and address aloud for the record, as well as write it down. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am? Do we have a paper to write down? Mike, is there a paper?
Yeah.
There is, okay.
My name is Sandra Martin, I'm at three, two, five, St. Mary Boulevard, apartment A, Biloxi, Mississippi.
And please speak up loud, 'cause George can't hear.
Was that loud enough there, though?
Probably louder.
Speak up.
Okay. I don't know if I can write and talk at the same time. Okay. Now, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm just gonna say whatever it is that I have come here to say. Say, say what?
Say it loud.
George, Mr. Lawrence, I'm sorry. I caught you, George. What about your first name, and he said that? I'm, I, I really would like to try and clean up my neighborhood. Especially my street, but my reason for being here tonight is because at three twenty-seven, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, three twenty-nine St. Mary Boulevard, the gentleman has two dogs, and they continuously bark. Now, I've tried the police and, for the last year, year and a half, and nothing is being done. Uh, I don't know why he is being the way he is, uh, but um, one day he run up to me and, and my friend, and I tried to bring charges against him for that, but the police officer, Sergeant Elliott, did something else, so he said instead of a felony, he would go with a misdemeanor. But that's one thing, and then at three seventeen B on my street, there's a rooster. I have talked to the landlord about the rooster, and they still have not stopped the rooster from crowing early in the morning, most, uh, days, and, um, it's things like that, that I am not being paid attention to. And, uh, four years ago, I was appointed neighborhood watch captain. Uh, and the whole neighborhood showed up to one meeting or a couple of meetings, but there was four of us on this St. Mary Boulevard that came to every meeting, and, uh, but now, because we had a young man with autism that was breaking into houses and into, um, automobiles four years ago, so I decided to start up this neighborhood watch. And it did stop him from doing that, you know, it stopped him from breaking into places and, and automobiles, but anyway, the whole point of me being here tonight, not realizing how big of a meeting this was, uh, was because of the dogs at three twenty-nine. Uh, they start early in the morning, uh, and they continue till late at night, sometimes ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Ma'am, I don't, I do believe the chief wouldn't mind meeting you in the back and, um, clearing up any problems you might have, okay?
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Anyone, anyone else on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone on my right that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on the, uh, back room? If not, citizen comments are now closed. Move on to policy agenda. You wanna call him out? All right. George says there's kids in the back room, and he wants to know who you are.
All the students, stand up!
All right. What class, what class are you from?
Um, we're class twenty, twenty, from Justice and Justice District.
Very good, welcome. All right, moving on to policy agenda, Ms. Lucy?
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances for various sections to address classification, pay rates, performance, increase the gel- eligibility, medical leave without pay, et cetera.
Do we have a motion?
I'll put a motion out there.
We got a motion by Mr. Tisdale, do we have a second? Do we have a second? If not, it dies. Move on to resolution B.
Resolution confirming and approving the mayor's appointment of Pam Pizerich Barlow to the Biloxi Tree Committee.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Glavin, any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
No, anyone that'll volunteer, we'll, we'll let them.
Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Pizerich, she's a barlow now, she, she'll be a good representative, good person, uh, know her personally.
Is she here?
I don't think so. You have to be somewhat of a stout soul to serve on this committee.
Amen.
Well, she has a, she at the end of her name, so I think she'll be just fine.
She does, but I, I think she'll do a fine job, thank you.
All right, all in favor? unanimous votes? Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Some of them.
Second.
By Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
Uh, yeah, on item N, will these people be running a bait shop out of, out of that as well?
Will, will they?
The people that are doing the new lease on the Causeway deal? I'm just asking, someone called me on the, on my way to the meeting tonight, asking, hey, are we ever gonna get a bait shop?
Right, answer is yes.
Okay.
Basically, uh, item M and item N is, uh, we're closing out one lease.
And opening another one, and this, and they will be running a bait shop?
They will be running a bait shop.
Do you know when that'll be going online, soon? Okay.
End of the month, yeah, January first is supposed to be open.
Okay.
Can I interject something as well? I think this time go around, it might be a little different, I think we've talked and we're gonna do a little bit more to promote and market that area, better signage, better, better, um, visibility for that, for that park, the Causeway Park and the bait shop.
Even something going across the bridge, 'cause, because of where the entrance to it is, if something where you could see advertisement from while you're going across the bridge, would be good. And then, um, I'll be a no on P and Q, and that's it.
Which one?
P.
Okay, Mr. Glavin?
I have no.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item T, that's the, um, North Contract, it's Neil Schaefer for project management services, services, and it's for extension of services to run through December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, not December twenty twenty, so it's, it's gonna run for another two years. That wasn't a typo, was it?
Councilman, what's that's related to is Neil Schaefer, who is our resident project representative and inspectors, um, related to all of our infrastructure, they have an amendment with their current professional services contract to inspect for the city through June of twenty twenty-one. Uh, but because of the extended delays, as, uh, Councilman Guines pointed out, due to the Oscarinda contract, it has caused multiple projects to extend past. So it's an extension on Neil Schaefer's recognition, we will need our Neil Schaefer inspectors for an extended period of time because of Oscarinda.
Okay, that, that explains it, thank you.
We only pay them when they work, do we have people that we pay who don't work?
No, okay, all right.
Good, good philosophy.
That's a good point, Mayor, that is correct. Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you're gonna bill FEMA for this. I was just wondering, I know we're supposed to be charging them six thousand dollars a day, I mean, they twenty-nine months behind time. Are they actually paying that? You take, you subtract it. I mean, that's a long time, you know? That's why I agree with, uh, Felix on, you know, I mean, eh, you have a little problem, you're a little bit behind, but two and a half years, come on. That's pretty bad, you know?
Mr. Guines? Mr. Lawrence?
I'm not.
Uh, H, this, uh, Mr. President of Physical, talking about such a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Transportation Commission. What are we doing here, H?
I could give you the short version, but let me give you the long version. Since you asked.
I'll start with the short version and continue, if you need more. The short version is, is in twenty twelve, we received a grant from MDOT. The acceptance of the grant was approved by council, but it was never recognized into a capital project budget. Uh, I'm recognizing that grant into the budget in this resolution and providing the full match, so that we can.
It's one we discussed before, I just thought it'd be good to tell the
It is.
The rest of the council of the twenty twelve, this is just something that's not more money, added money, it's something that we need to do to straighten this out from twenty twelve.
This is administrated from twenty twelve, this is fixing it, so that we have our full budget.
Thank you for that. And, uh, on I, I know I and that both of them dealing with a new contract, whatever you wanna call it, new, uh, project ten sixty-one. I don't even talk about doing the boardwalk and stuff like that from Oak Street to the harbor.
Well, Councilman, as you remember, we got two Gomasa grants, or we are being given two Gomasa grants. One of them is for the Bayview Boardwalk, and the other one is for the boardwalk that we're calling Small Craft to Oak Street Boardwalk. There was not, on the former project, the Bayview Boardwalk, there was already a capital project established and a design well along. On the ca- in the case of the, the Front Beach, if you will, Boardwalk, there was not, we had to create a new capital project. So that's what that item I is, is creating the capital project that will be the money, the project will dump the Gomasa money into.
I know, I know what you're trying to do, that's my biggest problem, is that we have any, I know you got another one, eh, K. Where is the design, are we gonna even have a design? I mean, we don't, it could have says here going across the sand beach, people don't understand that. So, I mean, what exactly are they trying to do? And where are we gonna put it at? I mean, that's what everybody like to know.
Up with the ten-foot boardwalk that's already in places in fourteen thousand linear feet that we need seventeen thousand of. This is gonna be about one mile of that, uh, the design will be, uh, about uh, four steps or five steps down, ten foot wide to match up with the other boardwalks. This one will have a knee wall, eighteen-inch knee wall, that will, in effect, keep the sand, you know, as best as it can off the beach. The part of that Gomasa two is, is a replenishment of a different kind of sand. Heavier sand. But that will be, again, about, about one mile between Oak Street and Small Craft Harbor. The design is not exotic, it's ten foot of concrete, and it's, I think, uh, Brown and Mitchell have passed all the stress tests, and we had some structural engineers loading up, um, uh, the actual seawall to make sure that it won't move, and we've gotten approval on that, so this is something that, that Brown and Mitchell has started, and, and the Corps of Engineers have approved.
Well, the reason I brought this up, because a few people asked me, they said they, they hear about the eighteen inches, the three feet, eh, they keep thinking that you're gonna add something on top of the seawall.
No, we're gonna edge it up.
You know, that's what it, that's, I'm just, listen a second. Just, you know, while people ask me, and so I said, I'm asking you.
Okay.
Okay, they think you adding on top of the seawall. But you attaching something to the seawall.
Right, you're, you're with me with regard to the ten-foot boardwalk that is in, that's in places now. We're gonna do that, but on top of that, which is probably five steps out, there'll be an eighteen-inch knee wall that will, in effect, you know, act as a, as a barrier to people walking off instead of a, you know, putting fences and so forth, but it also will, in effect, raise the profile of the seawall, so the sand won't rise. In addition, you know, we're talking about fifty thousand cubic yards of sand of some type, where, uh, where we have some uh, Covington engineer and is determining what we have now versus what we could do and where we could get it. And, and that's part of this project.
And the other, the other question is, um, the seawall itself is not attached to anything. It was built sitting on really nothing.
It's on piles.
Right, but I mean, it's not attached to anything. If you attach anything to the seawall, like the last time they did that with the steps, we were lucky enough to throw the steps out. But I'm not concerned, other people ask me, will the seawall move if you have something attached to it?
No.
Where they can push the water, the water tougher than anything. And that seawall is not attached to anything.
This would be resting on top of the seawall. And, and again, that, some of the testing that we did a year and a half ago, is that if that weight of that cast-in-place seaw- you know, concrete that we're putting on, that's in, like I said, we've got thirty-one thousand linear feet of seawall. like I said, we've got thirty-one thousand linear feet of seawall. Fourteen thousand of, it already has this ten-foot boardwalk on top of it. It's been there since Katrina, since it blew away. We're trying to, one bit of that, that, you know, to have that boardwalk where you can do more than, you know, just one person can walk on the top of it is what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
So, but that knee wall that people are asking about is going to be attached on the edge of that, on, on the south side, on top of that ten-foot boardwalk. Not going to raise the height of the seawall.
All right, but I mean, just need to find these things out, so it's passable, like, you know? They're going to, they're going to call you, they're going to call us and find out, you know? Like I built the seawall, you know, in nineteen, you know?
Twenty-seven.
Like to know the seawall was thought of nineteen twenty-three.
Finished in twenty-seven.
And finished in twenty-eight. Had a year and a half, it was off, they didn't do it. They saw it in Pass Christian, but that's when they did it. They built it strictly as a bulkhead. Uh, the other thing, let's see what we got here. We doing, say again? Yeah, I was there. Me and Jesus were there, we did that, huh? What else you want to know, Robert? And this is Melbourne, I mean, I guess Rachel's got a, the V. Once again, we got this Gulf Breeze thing on here with the landscaping. What are we doing again now, we amending amendment? It's all day long, we amend these things. I understand that.
Say that again, hold on, say that again.
You add two. Well, thank you, thank you, Robert. That's a good thing. See, I want to make you, make you a little credit. Now, he knew I was going to ask those questions, he, I'm glad he's ready for me. And, and R, we had this much money left over from the boardwalk to add to Capelten Sixty-Two with the lights on the bridge. Is that money was left over from once we finished the pedestrian walkover?
R, we're, we're assigning, R is a new project.
You said the money come from the pedestrian walkway.
Project Ten Sixty-Two. If, if you've been down to the.
Yes.
Okay, that's the short version.
So it's, and it's going to take that much money to do the lights on the old bridge?
We don't know yet, we, we've got.
You just allow that much money?
What we know is half the lights are out, and they, and so instead of doing one light at a time, we're going to do a project using money from the county that's intended for work in the ports.
Somebody else that's going to say that, make sure I check with you, Fo Fo, they said the bridge from Ocean, the Biloxi Ocean Spring Bridge, was that given to the city?
It was not, not yet. We're talking about the Ocean Spring, the Biloxi Bay Bridge is the whole name for it. There was a push for MDOT to dump man, maintenance, maintenance of all the lights. But that, we both, us and Ocean Springs backed off on it, so it's dead in the water right now.
Yeah, because, you know, that's how we wound up the Pops Ferry Bridge and all that trouble. The county gave us that, you know? I mean, it, the, those lights are hard to replace, I mean, you got to have a lot of equipment. You know, that's why I was just wondering if that ever happened, that they would give that back to us. I'll give it to us. Let's see here, what else we got? This one, Larry here?
Larry is not, he's on vacation.
Well, I was just wondering, we buying seventeen life rings? We have seventeen people to throw them out?
You know, interestingly enough, that initiative started with Gerald Bless, he sent me a note, and he know, he had been in the harbor, and he said, why is it we have no life rings? If somebody falls off these piers, there's no, you need something to throw to them to get them, because, because you can't get out of the wa, can't get out of the water. I thought that was a good idea, so here we go.
Well, why seventeen is there? That's a weird number.
Well, our port manager walked the piers and decided that's how many he needed. It sounded like a good round number.
Why does it look to me they got anything else? All right, that's good enough for tonight.
All right, all in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous votes, exceptions?
I'm voting, yeah, I do. On P?
D, as in dog?
At the Bella, Bella V, I'm voting against, there's two of them, with Bella V.
Which? Okay.
P and Q.
So P and Q, uh-huh. Anyone else?
You know, Robert, you know what P and Q stands for? You ever heard of mind your Ps and Qs? You know what that means?
I've never had it.
No, the Ps and Qs are pints and quarts. It comes out of the Irish bars, the mind your Ps and Qs. And they drink everything in pints and quarts, in case you'd like to know that too. I was, I was there too.
Thank you, Papa.
Yeah.
Cherry? Code enforcement?
First item on the agenda, Adcock Family Limited Partnership, eleven fifty Judge Seacle Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Adcock Family Limited Partnership? If not, this case is closed.
On item B, we're going to need to rescind that one. It's actually changed owners, so we'll have to go back and address the new owner and bring it back. Item C, Elizabeth, Elizabeth V. Corcoran, three sixty-six Main Street. This property is still in violation. Ms. Corcoran called me today and asked if she could have a three to four week extension. This was, if you'll remember, this was the project where they were proposing apartments to go on it on Main Street. And the zoning did not change, and so they're having to regroup, but she said she would get it cut within the next three to four weeks.
How many weeks?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
All right. Motion by Mr. Lawrence for thirty days, and seconded by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Unanimous votes?
Item D on the agenda, we're going to need to rescind that one as well, Dandy Properties at seventeen oh two Ridgeway. That one also changed ownership. Item E, Dandy Properties LLC, sixteen oh one Gordon Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item F, Roy E. and Emily A. Gilmore Estate, that property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Roy E. and Emily A. Gilmore Estate? No one, this case is closed.
Item G, Ethel J. Murdoch, three twenty-nine Pops Ferry Road, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ethel J. Murdoch at three twenty-nine Pops Ferry Road? If not, this case is closed.
Item H, Chang V. Quang, one three two seven five Hudson Crown Road, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Chang V. Quang at one three two seven five Hudson Crown Road? Being no one, this case is closed.
Item R, Francis Abney Life Estate, two seventy-seven Nixon Street, that case has been resolved.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
We need a money report, who's working tonight? Somebody.
All in favor? Unanimous votes? And FYI, Santa arrives at the Biloxi Lighthouse on Thursday at five thirty. The children's walking parade is Friday at six in downtown, and we'll be celebrating on Town Green After. And Biloxi Main Street's fifteenth annual Christmas in the City is this Saturday from ten to four. So lots of fun, and merry, merry Christmas. All right, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting in memory of John Allen.
Second.
We all second it?
We all second it?
We all move it?
All in favor? Meeting recessed. Have a good night, be careful.